For to the deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. The council corporation township of Hornpane would like to begin by respectfully acknowledging that the land on which we gather here. Today is three nine nineteen oh five nineteen oh six territory. The traditional lands of indigenous peoples. As we work towards reconciliation, we all live with respect on this land and live in peace, friendships with all these diverse peoples. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three is the review of note any changes to the agenda. There are none. If we need a mover and a seconder for the approval, please move by councillor Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissamaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby approve the agenda as presented. Those in favor? And that is carried. Item number five declaration of senior interest declaration of conflict of interest. I do have two forms right now. Uh for myself for agenda item number fourteen point two, the closed session minutes. I just if any discussion evolves from the minutes, I won't want to be a part of that. And item fourteen point four. Uh a personal conflict. And carrying on, uh so during that time, councillor Stephenic, you can chair.
Yes.
Uh so moving on to the end council, if you uh need to declare, you can do that anytime throughout the meeting if such a situation arises. And adoption of the minutes for the special meeting of council for the December fourth twenty twenty four minutes. Jen, did you want to speak to this?
Yes.
Okay.
Um so there was an error in the minutes with regards to uh which councillor was going to which conference, uh so that was just updated. Um and they're being passed again. So that we have the correct council members.
Okay, if I can get a mover and a seconder, please move by councillor Dragos Stefanik, second by councillor Ted Chinaman. Where's the minutes of the special meeting of council held on December fourth twenty twenty four, where a document of the regular meeting of council? On December eleventh twenty twenty four through resolution number twenty twenty four four twenty five. And whereas an error has error has been identified in the transcript of these minutes and specifically the incorrect listing of a council member for conference attendance. And where it is necessary to correct this error by resubmitting the accurate minutes to council for adoption. Therefore, be it resolved that the council of corporation, the township of Hornpane hereby adopts the corrected minutes of the special meeting of the council held on the special meeting of council held on Wednesday, December fourth twenty twenty four is distributed. Be it further resolved that resolution number twenty twenty four four twenty five is hereby repealed in its entirety. So just one more further comment on these minutes. Um just as I was going through reading them, Jen is going to make some corrections to the dates of the conferences. There is some conflict in dates. And the second item that I noticed was the NFMC board representative. We had deferred it to come back and we haven't brought that. So we're gonna bring it back. Okay? And uh any further comment from council on those minutes? There being none, I put them to a vote. Those in favor and that is carried. Okay, item number six point two. Is the uh April sixteenth minutes mover and a seconder, please move by councillor. Ted Chinaman, second by councillor Peter Kissamaker. Be it resolved that the council of corporation and township of Hornpane does hereby adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of council. Held on Wednesday, April sixteenth twenty twenty five is distributed. Any comment or note to those minutes? There being none, I put them to a vote. Those in favor and that is carried. Special meeting of council, April twenty third twenty twenty five. Move by councillor Dragos Stefanik, second by councillor Ted Chinaman. Be it resolved that the council of corporation, the township of Hornpane does hereby adopt the minutes of the special meeting of council held on Wednesday, April twenty third twenty twenty five as distributed. Any comment or note to those minutes? There being none, I put those to a vote. Those in favor and that is carried. And the April thirtieth regular meeting of council minutes moved by councillor Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Ted Chinaman. Be it resolved that the council of corporation, the township of Hornpane does hereby adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, April thirtieth twenty twenty five as distributed. Any note or comment to those minutes? There being none, I put those to a vote. Those in favor and that is carried. Okay, moving on, we have departmental reports. If we can get a mover and a seconder for the motion. And open the floor, move by councillor Dragos Stefanik, second by councillor Ted Chinaman. Be it resolved that council does hereby acknowledge receipt of the departmental reports provided at the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, May fourteenth twenty twenty five. And we start with the clerk's report. Jen, do you have any comments to your report or any additions?
No, but I can take any questions.
Okay, opening up the floor for questions.
I have none. Thank you.
Okay, I just I have one question about the Service Ontario, the changes. So we're bringing that back to council for uh exactly what they're going to agree to?
Um so we will bring the agreement once we work out all the numbers with Service Ontario, we'll bring it back to the bylaw for council to approve.
Okay, so is the job posting going to be done after that agreement or before?
Hosted. It's it's live currently.
Okay, I'm I'm just kind of concerned about that. If we don't come to an agreement, who's paying for that position?
So the person won't be starting until the new agreement is signed. Essentially, the way that it is set up right now is that they are going to pay for our the way it's been done.
Yeah.
But we will sign the new agreement prior to a person actually starting training or starting anything. Um and then they'll pay for that'll be covered. We do have um and Richard can speak to this as well, but we have had meetings with them uh where they've mentioned essentially they have certain amounts approved. So they've already essentially approved that it'll be twenty hours a week. Um that they will pay for in full for that employee and they'll pay the training and the upfronts.
Um okay.
So it's just we have to provide the quotes and the specific numbers for that.
Um great. I sorry, I just I was in my mind, I was thinking, did we pass the Service Ontario agreement? Where are we on that? But we haven't. Okay. Richard, did you want to speak to that question at all?
No, I think Jennifer's covered that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I have no further questions. Okay, thank you, Jen. So moving or one further question, when is the job closing?
Let me check. So we posted three jobs on Monday, so I'm getting mixed up with which one.
You know, May twenty sixth, May twenty sixth. Okay, right on.
Yes, we have a beautiful little timeline and art draft.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Jen. So moving on to the Act and Treasures report. Richard, do you have anything you want to add to your report?
I do. I have a few things, actually. Um it one thing that I did not put into the report this time, and I wanted to bring up to council's attention. Um I had a meeting this week with MPAC to review our first quarter uh results with them. Uh that really is just them showing that they are keeping up to date on any inquiries, any adjustments that need to be done, whatever. Uh but during that conversation or that meeting I had with Judy from MPAC, I was inquiring about the new multi-res tax rate because we have not moved forward on that. She did some checking and got back to me and she said the best they can determine, there are only two municipalities in the whole province that have instituted that new special rate and they are the city of Toronto and York region. So nobody up north has done it at all. Now, we we have um some work and progress that um could qualify and there there's some rumors of further multi-res. So I was thinking I would suggest that we move forward or we wait until the new uh CAO arrives, but get that bylaw ready. Um I don't think it would hurt to at least have the bylaw passed and then we could institute the rate whenever we want. So I just wanted to get some direction from council whether they were still wanting to proceed with it since no one else has. We want to be the ones that's inventing it for us moment, it's about.
Well, I do have a couple of questions on that, Richard. Thank you for reaching out and finding out about that. Uh first of all, council, do you have any questions on that specifically or?
That specific item, yeah.
Go ahead, Drew.
I just I would like to know, Richard, please, the amount of effort and time that this will take on your behalf to do since it's a new thing and it's uh breaking new ground. We're taking massive amount of your time, Richard, please.
I I don't think it's going to take much time at all. I I believe all we need to do is draft the wording based on the Assessment Act uh regulation that that put this uh new multi-res property subclass in effect. So I think all we need to do is is draft the bylaw and in in that identify the reduction rate that council wants to him to offer to any any um taxpayer that is going to develop multi-res properties. Um and you can reduce that rate to up to thirty five percent reduction compared to other multi-res properties.
Thank you.
So not a lot of work.
Okay, my question was more in the with the new funding packages that are coming out for housing. Do you see it maybe beneficial to attract a developer that would do something multi-res?
Um I I think it it definitely could. Um Hornpane is pretty small compared to Toronto or York region, but I think, you know, to try and copy their example would not be um probably wouldn't work well for us. But uh I I think I know the uh the plans that um Stacy has for the CIP program coming down the road and um it this could fall in there as well because it the CIP program could encourage um development. And um whether it's going to be for single family or multi-res and um yeah, it I think there could be some benefit. I think that CIP program that she has to release later this year is um hopefully going to spur a lot of interest in development in Hornpane. And um so I think it it would be wise to have this available.
Okay. Okay, any other comments to your report that you want to add?
Do I do have some other things? I'm sorry, I um I've got some updates. The um the ministry um the the arrears of PILs specifically from the Ministry of Transportation, we have some progress in that uh we did get an email where they have authorized the payment of the twenty twenty five interim tax bills. So to me, that's that's a big plus. At least somebody is saying, yes, it is our property. We do have to pay. So that's about twenty thousand dollars worth um of the current year's taxes. Uh I've reached out to the individual that made that authorization. Actually, I've left her a couple of uh phone messages. Uh but I also now have our representative um from uh MMMAH uh with those rule numbers to try and follow up on that as well. Anyway, I just wanted to let council know I think we're we're going to get there and hopefully very soon. Um the on that same tax arrears, Bonnie and I have reviewed all of the uh outstanding taxes and we have a list of properties that we will be preparing final notices and probably sending them out next week. Uh so we'll give a little bit of an update at the next meeting as to how many final notices and which how many properties could be we could be looking at listing for tax sale. Um on the uh capital projections or the capital projects financing, uh infrastructure Ontario as of today. We are in the home stretch. We almost have everything completed for a borrowing bylaw, which we should bring to council uh at the next meeting, which would authorize a construction loan up to one and a half million for the Third Avenue project. Um and we also have then the uh the borrowing bylaw for the CIBC on the agenda for tonight. Uh I think that's all for now unless anybody's got any questions.
Okay, thank you, Richard. I open up the floor to council for questions. Okay, I just uh just on that one loan that we have with the CIBC, I was reading through it. So it's structured at a million, but it has three different assets in it that can't be renewed. Am I getting that right?
What what that the bylaw for tonight is is uh an operating line of one million dollars plus three individual capital loans. So that's on top of the million.
Okay, so it's on top. When I was reading through, it sounded like it to me, the way I first read it was that it was a million and then these three loans were with included in that. But could not be really. Okay, so we do have that million and that's usually what we get every year.
Every year, yes. We we establish an operating line so that if um if cash flow requires some borrowing in order to keep the bills paid, uh then um like right now, we we have some large outstanding uh grants, the the spec specifically on the airport that is making cash flow tight. So we're trying to get the final uh report done on the airport. So hopefully they'll release their uh large holebacks there.
Okay, okay, great.
We're on top. We're on top of it.
Thank you, Richard. No, I just I was trying to understand. So this capital borrowing line of credit. Do we have to we'll have to reply uh apply again in January for it or now we don't have to apply? It's established.
Those those individual smaller loans are established and that's like the one was for the uh the new ball field. And that's that's financed over fifteen years. The breathing apparatus and is over seven years. And the auto extraction equipment is over seven years. Now, all three of those capital loans are locked in rate for five. And then we'll prob we'll have to renew them at what the going rate is at that point in time or pay them out. Okay?
Right, right. But I'm talking about the the line of credit, the million dollar credit. Are we going to have to reapply? Because usually we we pass the bylaw every year.
Yes, yeah.
We're gonna have to do that again.
The operating is done once a year. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, is there any further questions? Go ahead, Belinda. Are we going ahead with the multi-res? Does that have to be decided now or be waiting or what? Uh, Richard, I was thinking we were going ahead with it. Okay, you are? Okay.
My understanding is we'll go ahead and prepare the bylaw and if it's not at the May twenty eighth meeting, it'll be at the June meeting. Uh and in the end, I don't want to really um bother our new uh new to be CAO yet, but um I think we'll go ahead and get the bylaw drafted and then we can present it in case there is a new application coming through.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving forward then, uh we have Dwayne's report, Public Works Manager's report. If we have any questions, uh the interim CAO can take them and get back to us. Any questions? Go ahead, councillor Stan.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Uh just on the water breaks through down the river, what's projected date for completion of those projects?
I uh understand that um Billman was out today. Um and I understand I understand that they were going to be completed tomorrow.
Um, thank you.
I do have one question. I'm just wondering about our derelict buildings and if we're going to have a list of what's going to come down this year and what's not. Um just in the past, council knows that I've put in a couple of requests for service just for the one that's beside me, but I am concerned because
I'd be a follower on you.
Yeah, well, I'm not. The way it's, yeah, I'm just I'm really concerned about the liability, so.
So I have spoken to our public works uh director about that.
Mm-hmm.
Um I understand that um he does have five that he wants to take down. Um but that is certainly going to be pending um room in the landfill site, whether or not um uh we do have the capacity um for all five, but he has told me that uh the house on Front Street is definitely a priority because it has been deemed a health and safety risk.
Okay.
Because it, as council knows, it is basically imploding. It's falling in on itself. Um and we have had multiple uh concerned citizens reach out
Okay, okay.
About it. So that is number one on uh on Dwayne's Dwayne's list. Uh they do have some work to do at the landfill site in order to make one for it. Um so they're going to do that and and then take down that house. So it is slated to be taken down in the summer.
Okay, okay. Good to know. We gotta go ahead, Belinda.
Speaking of the landfill site, can you maybe put on your agenda? We have um visitors coming in on June twentieth. When I go to work and come home, I'm seeing the second dump. Second dump is really disgusting right now. I do not want to see that or when our company comes.
Oh, for um for good roads.
For good roads presentation. That that is right. Right now it's bad and we have to do something.
So maybe we can take that offline because I don't know exactly what you mean by bad because I don't I don't understand.
We need garbage pickup.
Okay.
Okay, if I may, I believe that is also part of what uh the Public Works Manager had mentioned with regards to having to uh prepare the uh active site or taking down houses. They need to actually push it into specific cells and ensure that everything is where it needs to come. So that would be part of it.
Okay, councillor Stan.
Yeah, I I'm glad that Dwayne decided that's the first houses besides you. I mean, it's not rocket science. What concerns me though, we have four more houses and how much will we handle landfill? I think we should have reported on that in the future to see how much square quarters or square meters would be left after five homes. I think that's important to consult to know. To your past, we have to move on. What we have to do with the landfill. Thank you.
Okay.
I completely agree with councillor Stefanik, but but it's all said and done, they have to tore down no matter what. We have to make arrangements because it's a health hazard and it's, yeah.
Well, I think it Dwayne speaks to it a bit in his report. Maybe we just need to clarify, like to expand the timeline. As he says, he's working on the landfill expansion with the XP. My understanding is that the majority of that work has been done. Um so maybe that's what we need is just an update of where that's at and when that expansion, when we can look at using that expansion. Um uh one question that I have to follow up with what you're saying, council is is there an area where we can store the refuse from the houses until we're waiting?
I will certainly take that back and and we can find that out. Uh Dwayne and I did have a meeting with EXP and Pension today. And um so I know that the the landfill expansion is is moving ahead and and one um one solution that we we did discuss is you using the material from taking down the houses as material that we can cap the landfill with.
Oh.
Uh so Dwayne, uh the conversation is definitely happening. Um that's you know, what A, what do we do with these houses and um what, because we do have certain um guidelines that we have to follow that the MOE has put in place. What can we put into the to the landfill? And I mean, we don't want to expand the landfill and just to fill it up again.
Yeah.
Uh so that conversation is happening, but we can certainly um arrange for a presentation similar to the one that Pension did. So council can really understand where we are in the process and um you know, what needs to be done to make sure that all of your goals and objectives are will be completed.
Yeah, I think all of council would be in agreement to understand where we're at with that.
Yeah.
Am I getting that feeling where I want?
You can get it.
Yeah.
If you have if we have to move twice, we have to move twice. But it's always just much cheaper and more efficient to move it once.
Right, right. But if we have safety concerns.
Yeah, we may not have a choice.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll leave that with uh yourself and Dwayne to uh just give council a further update on that landfill expansion. Okay, any other further questions for public works? No? Okay, moving on to uh economic development. Stacy, do you have anything you want to add to your report?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, council, I open up the floor for questions. Those are straight. Go ahead.
Yeah, to Mayor to the DC. I asked two second last meeting about the business. This is important to me. Business startup inquiries. You said it was two at that time. Was any progress made on those inquiries?
Uh so I haven't those ones I sent information to had conversations. Those ones have come back. I've had three new ones in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. So just to expand on that, what do people do when they want to know about starting up a business in Hornpane? What should they do?
Well, they can call me. On our economics about my website, on our page, there's business hubs right on the bottom. They can click and it has all the connections. They can actually use the online tool to build a business plan if they want.
Okay.
So lots of times people call me to ask me what the rules are in Hornpane and then I provide them the information and I leave us over the tool. It's very easy, step by step. That they actually can populate it right on. Uh they can they can download the the app. Uh so it's really, really helpful and it actually links to grants, all different things. So usually they come to me, they have questions about either zoning or business license. We have a conversation. I I answer all their questions and then I lead them to the resources that they're asking for.
Well, good. Yeah, okay. Good to know. Any further questions? I just have one. Do you know if they're going to reschedule the Tiny Summit in Mountmore?
Not sure. They're not sure yet.
They're not sure? Okay. Okay, that's.
Sorry.
Can I go ahead?
Yes. Uh the bathrooms, how are we doing with the aside that?
I'm actually not sure. Uh we have that, Dwayne.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll defer that question to Dwayne. Okay, if there's no further questions, I'm going to put the I'm going to acknowledge receipt to a vote to report those in favor and that is carried. Okay, moving on to next one, it's action items. The first one is Moosehide Campaign Day. There are pins up at the front for anyone and there will be pins available at the town hall. You can get a mover and a seconder, please. Move by councillor Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissamaker. Whereas the Moosehide Campaign is an indigenous-led grassroots movement of men, boys, and all Canadians standing up to end violence against women, children, and all those along the gender continuum. And whereas the Moosehide Campaign was founded along the highway of tears in British Columbia in response to the injustices injustices and violence faced by many women and children in Canada, particularly those who are who are indigenous and whereas intimate partner violence IPV is an epidemic proportions across Canada with more than four in ten women having experienced it in their lifetime. And this reality is worse for indigenous women who are twice as likely to experience violence from their current or former partners. And whereas the Moosehide Campaign has distributed over six million Moosehide pins that each spark five conversations about issues of violence against women, children, and all those along the gender continuum. Whereas wearing the Moosehide pin demonstrates a commitment to honor, respect, and protect the women and children in your life, end gender-based violence, and make meaningful action towards reconciliation with indigenous peoples. And whereas participation in the Moosehide Campaign is a concrete action for all citizens to address the legacies of colonialism, residential schools, and the reality of more than twelve hundred missing and murdered women in Canada. And whereas engagement with the Moosehide Campaign aligns with the United Nations Declaration of Right of the Right of Indigenous Peoples, Peoples' Undrip, the Truth and Reconciliation Commission's Call to Action, and the Calls for Justice of the National Inquiry into Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls, Indigenous Women and Girls. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpane proclaims May fifteenth twenty twenty five as Moosehide Campaign Day. Any comments? Any comments on the motion? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, the Moosehide Campaign, um, I had a look on their website, and their website, if I, if I may, and I, I support the programs and the activities listed on their Canada Revenue Agencies, their T, their um thirty ten form, and it's registered as the Moosehide Foundation. And their ongoing programs, it's listed as the charity provides educational programs and open source curriculum on ending violence against women and children for K to twelve educators in schools in Canada to continue to create new curriculum and resources to provide education professionally year round. And the attachments provided on their, their posters and information adhere to that. And they confirm um that the provisions of the charities, but in the motion we're putting forth, there's inclusions that are contrary to the charity's um actions and listed objectives, which in turn contradict the legal mandated charities, programs, and activities. Therefore, I don't know whether we should be adding objectives to the uh activities of the charity. And I believe our wording needs to be changed to reflect only the listed objectives on the CRA website on ending violence against women and children. And please let it be known, I acknowledge there is violence, there is violence being perpetrated against other continuums, but they're not listed on the CRA statement of activities for Moosehide Foundation. And that being said, I believe, as Mayor and Council, we should develop a guideline for making a decision regarding proclamations. And my understanding is each request for proclamation is looked at on its own merit, but that method may in future lead us to a position that could be construed as prejudicial. I do have the CRA information, if anyone is interested in it, and and again, I think it's great, but I think we need to stay within the confines of what the CRA has given them a mandate for.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, Jeff, go ahead, your moments, please?
Yes, I just wanted to advise that this uh motion, this proclamation, was actually provided to me by Moosehide Campaign. I asked them if they had anything specific, and they had a template that they provided, so this was fully what they provided for.
Okay, so we didn't.
I did not draft this, they did.
So that puts the onus back on them to, so that's fine.
Okay.
And we have that in an email or in their package?
Yeah, I didn't include that in the um additions, I, the draft motion that they provided, the template is just everything except it's essentially insert municipality here.
Okay.
But um, and I also added a couple of comments, because I like an Oxford comma.
Okay, any further comments on that? Counselor Stan?
Fine as it is, thank you.
Okay.
See?
Counselor, okay. Okay, if there's no further uh comments on, if those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, moving on to Northeastern Public Health Pride Month, if I can get a mover and a second, or moved by Counselor Drago Stann, second by Counselor Peter Kissmaker. Whereas Pride Month recognizes each June, recognized each June, acknowledges the contributions, history, and ongoing struggles of the two SLGBTQY plus community fostering acceptance in the elimination of discrimination and prejudice. And whereas the Township of Hornpein recognizes the importance of equality and inclusiveness for all community members and the positive impact these values have on community well-being and cohesion. And whereas the Northeast Public Health NEPH Office has requested participation from local municipalities to visibly support Pride Month to raise awareness and support inclusivity. And whereas NEPH has specifically requested that the Township of Hornpein demonstrate the support by displaying the pride flag in a prominent location at the Town Hall during the entirety of June to signal a commitment to diversity and inclusiveness. And whereas supporting the NEPH's initiative reflects the Township of Hornpein's commitment to inclusion, diversity, and equity within its community as well as in its public institutions. Therefore, be it resolved that the Council, the Corporation, the Township of Hornpein officially recognizes and supports Pride Month twenty twenty five and will display the pride flag prominently at the Town Hall throughout the month of June. Any comment to that motion? Uh, sorry, Counselor Stan, or Shannon, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and here we have a prime example of what could be perceived as a prejudicial decision. Because in our previous discussion on eight point one, we proclaimed May fifteenth as a day of recognition for a great cause and ending violence against women and children. And that's equally as important, no more and no less, as the focus of eight point two, but in fairness, I propose that instead of designating the month, we designate June fifteenth or another date rather than the entire month. In some municipalities of Ontario, the decision has been made to only fly the flag of the Canadian flag, the Province of Ontario, and the municipality's flag to try to keep away from getting into positions where we're going to choose whose cause we're going to support. So the rationale behind those is to prevent the appearance of any kind of a prejudicial um with any of the requests, so and again, I do pose that we adopt a policy that we fly the Canadian flag, the Province of Ontario flag, and the municipality's flag, and no other flags be raised. Um, and there's a very real possibility that in the very near future, we could be presented with the opportunity to recognize Sharia law um, which would take any of the gains that any of these continuums that have been prejudiced against, we would lose anything that we have gained. If we were, had someone come in and say, we need to do this, and you're gonna do that for a month, we would lose anything that's been gained in generations. Be gone, so. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Stan.
We respect what uh Counselor Shannon said. Orange's, uh, Sharia law would go against all of our written laws. And I don't think we should be splitting hairs and re, reinvent the wheel. I'm good with Pride Month, rest of the country is.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you, Counselor Stan.
All right, we one hundred percent with this resolution, and furthermore, Mayor, I would request a recorded vote on this issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Shannon, did you want to speak again?
Um, just as a rebuttal, not the whole country does, um, I looked yesterday, there are many municipalities that don't, but it's that, we're talking about us, that's, that's okay.
Well, then I'll speak on what we have.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Um, I do have a couple of comments. I think if we want to look at a flag and proclamation by law, we've had that discussion actually predate your time on Council tip um, about that, because uh we actually had a wholesome discussion during the Ukrainian crisis. And um, and a discussion previous to that, I can't remember what it was at the time. And it just so happened that we don't have many flag poles in our community, and we're not taking down our Canadian flag to fly, to fly other ones, that was this discussion at the time. But I have no problem, this one here doesn't say a flag pole, it says prominently um, display. There is um, at the uh front door, we've displayed the red dress there before, where the, we hung it there, I think that would be a perfect spot. And it's prominent, um, just a second, Jen. And um, and I have no problem with the, the resolution, I do, uh, the motion that's on the floor. Did, I do have a question for you, Jen, did they provide a supplement, or like a, a template as well?
Uh, they did not provide a template, uh, and I did work very hard to not use celebrate in this one. Um, sorry. However, uh, I just wanted to advise Council that uh, for one, they'll be providing the flag, so there will be no financial um portion or any requirement there, and I did confirm that it, they don't need it to be on a flag pole, they just want it up somewhere visible within the office or around.
Okay.
Yeah, so if it's not, if, I leave it to staff to decide where that would be hung, if uh Council's in agreement, it seems like we are. But um, yeah, it's that, but I do think that we can put, if you'd like to bring that forward, Ted, to have a notice of motion, I think it's a discussion that we should have into the future, because we've had this, and it's not about, it's about the lack of our flag poles, and where do we put them, and how do we support people, and and that sort of discussion, yeah. And I wish I could remember off the top of my head what that first one was that spurred all the discussion back then.
Was it not the Ukrainian, I mean?
No, it was previous, it was prior, it was prior to that, because I knew of it when we had the Ukrainian discussion, so. But uh, okay, any further discussion on this motion? Okay, there being none, and uh, Counselor Stefanic has asked for a recorded vote, so I'm gonna defer that to the clerk.
Okay, um. So, sorry, bear with me, this is only the second time I'm about to do one. Okay, so the first person that I ask, you, as you called the recorded vote, uh, are you for?
For.
Okay, and then I believe I go in alphabetical order, yes. So that would be Mayor Cheryl Fort, or? Counselor Belinda Kissmaker?
For.
Counselor Peter Kissmaker? And Counselor Ted Shannon?
And against.
Okay. Um, so that is a, it's passed, yes?
Yep, that is carried, okay. Okay, so uh, moving on to correspondence information only, if I can get a mover and a second, or open the floor, moved by Counselor Kissmaker, second by Counselor Belinda Kissmaker, be it res- be it resolved that Council does hereby acknowledge receipt of the correspondence information only package attached to the agenda of the regular meeting of Council held on Wednesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty five. And uh, do you wanna highlight some items in there? The correspondence that went out about uh, the hiring of the new Chief Administrative Officer. I did reach out to um, or Al Preswell reached out to me at CFNL, so that should be on CFNL. Um, also the invitation to the Home Hardware Grand Opening on Thursday, June twenty sixth, I encourage all of Council to come and our Economic Development Officer as well, and I've been asked to speak, so I am gonna say a few words there, I think this is really exciting for our community, for business, so I would request that after that, we have some sort of media, I'm not sure how we deal with that, but if we have a media announcement that I spoke there or something, and then I can follow up with that. Um, the other item that I have on this is nine point five AMO, if uh, we could get that sent to Catherine Lewis at the HHC, there's lots of housing initiatives in that. Any other comments? And sorry, I didn't ask, I didn't defer this out first. If there was anything that you wanted to highlight, okay. Okay. And I do have one question, just about the M and R uh review for app, do we usually have it that far away, like, why do we have cat forest on here?
Uh, it's the first time I received it from them. But I figured better safe than sorry, I'd put all the other ones we got, so, I was like, I'm in case I don't know something changed, it's going on there too.
Even a butt to our forest, right?
Would you agree?
No, no.
It doesn't, okay, I was like, okay. So we're putting it up there, cats, we're not, we're not poking around in your business. Figured better safe than sorry, it was sent to me, so.
That's all right, I was just, I was wondering, is there something that I'm missing about this, like, yeah. Okay, any further comments? Go ahead.
So I just wanted to add that I did receive correspondence from um Bill Rosenberg's office.
Okay, yes.
Um, and I believe um, that their offices uh is really working hard to um, schedule uh their Bill's first constituency clinic uh to coincide with uh the Home Hardware Grand Opening uh, on that day, so, I'm just gonna try to attend the grand opening as well as meet with constituents on the twenty sixth, so that's exciting.
Yeah, and I think um, Harry Sheen has uh had interest as well. So um, we'll see, I know that uh they sit until the twentieth, so he wasn't sure if he'd be able to back up here, it's good thing so. But that's great, okay, so any further comments? There being none, I put that to a vote to acknowledge receipt, those in favor, and that is carried.
Okay, committee board updates, if I can get a mover and a second, or please, moved by Counselor Drago Stefanic, second by Counselor Peter Kissmaker. Be it resolved that Council does hereby acknowledge receipt of the committee and board meeting minutes attached to the agenda of the regular meeting of Council held on Wednesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty five. And we have the Hornpein Housing Minutes and the Northeast Public Health Board Minutes. Any comment on those minutes or on the motion? Counselor Drago Stann, go ahead.
Thank you. Northeastern Public Health, they will receive the increase for twenty twenty five or the last year for the new Northeastern Public Health, with the last amount that we did we receive that increase, like, do we always do?
I'm not sure, do you want to defer this to Richard, does Richard?
Yes.
I don't know, I'm wondering if Richard does.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was um, working on a project here for you. Um, the, the notice of the increase in the levy for the health unit, yes, we did receive that, yeah.
And that is ten percent, correct?
Uh, I believe it is, it's gonna be over budget, um, but um that's um we're, we've got others that are gonna be under budget, I think the uh social services is under budget, health unit's gonna be over a little bit, yeah.
Okay, what did we actually budget for, Richard?
I, I think we budgeted for five, five percent is what the number is that I have on my head. I'll look that up.
Okay, thank you, sorry to put you on the spot here.
No, that's fine.
Sorry, the reason I knew this, I watched City of Timmins Council meeting last night, and they were not happy with ten percent increase. The merger was supposed to decrease, not increase. I'm not very happy, Dr. Catton, I'm not very happy, administration team, and most of all, I'm not happy with the new board. Including Mark Dupie, who represents Hornpein. I will reach out to him, that's absurd. When I was there, ten and a half, eleven years, we were looking at two percent, three percent, four percent. We also know for a fact they have reserve funds. They've not used the reserve funds.
Did, um, thank you for that, Counselor. Did we receive any um information with the increase of why there was an increase, because I have to agree completely with Counselor Stefanic that in the amalgamation process, that was why we um, did a friendly amalgamation and moved forward on a volunteer basis, that there was monies available to have that happen. So did we get any correspondence with them, Richard, sorry?
Yes, there was a backup information as well, so I'm trying to find that, we did budget for a five percent increase. And um, I'll see if I can get that backup information and provide it for Council.
Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Stann, go ahead.
And by learning, by watching City of Timmins, what actually, the most of the money for merger was for um consultant, uh, also for the new HVAC system in the, in the City of Timmins Public Health Unit. What happened, Forkland Health Unit, it was fifty nine dollars per capita per person in our health unit. The Miskinning Health Unit was a sixty three point five nine dollars, so they're trying to harmonize it. And we've been penalized on this side.
Okay, say that again, sorry?
Per capita.
Okay.
What they were paying in the uh, in their health unit, the Miskinning
Yeah.
much higher, it was sixty three dollars and fifty nine cents, whatever the precise numbers are. Per capita, that's how they decide how much each municipality, because we're paid. We were much lower, so now they're trying to harmonize it.
Okay.
If you have a moment, watch City of Timmins, it will explain uh, by, by the.
Which meeting was that, Drago?
Um, two nights ago.
So May the twelfth, or the fourteenth?
It's certainly marked down.
And what time are their meetings, Counselor? Which time are their meetings?
Uh, they, uh, they met at, uh, their meeting was, I watched, three, five thirty. Yeah, and it's on uh, their site. Not happy. And, and it might find out some budget.
Go ahead.
Even though we request the board to look at it that is too high, they'll send you a letter back saying, that's what we've made a decision, the board already decided. City of Timmins of the last year has got a formal letter saying, this will be decided as a board.
Okay. But that doesn't stop us from advocating for the next increase or next budget rounds and getting on uh, ahead of that. So if that's happening, so they're doing first of all, we should know uh, more in the future of what we're going to have to budget for, because if they've only budgeted fifty, fifty percent of what our increase is, so we can push for that, that that comes out earlier. Because even AdSAP is already pushing, like, they're getting their increases, or whatever, their budget out earlier. But um, I, like, can we, are we able to advocate to the province or to other, to the health units themselves, that as a small municipality, we can't take on a ten percent increase? Because what does that actually mean, then, if we were, we budgeted for like, it doubled, so what it, sorry, Richard, putting you right on the spot here.
Yeah, just one sec.
Okay, we can have a fuller conversation about this at our next council meeting, if you like, Richard.
Yeah, I'll, I can follow.
And then, yeah. Uh, go ahead, Melanie.
And we can also make a recommendation to have Mark join us, Mark Dupie, the Hornpean representative. And I think if he's available, I think it would be great for him to hear from, um, Mayor and council, to really understand what the concerns are, so he can adequately represent Hornpean at this table.
Yeah, that's.
He is the mayor of Maitai, which is a little smaller than us, and he's usually pretty understanding, so.
We can certainly extend the invitation.
Yeah.
He is virtually.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, he could attend virtually, uh, go ahead, Richard.
Uh, just to let, uh, council know, I, we budgeted for an increase of twenty-three hundred and sixty dollars, which is five percent. So we're now talking forty-seven. Um, yeah, forty-seven hundred. Uh, as an increase.
As an increase, but what's our total amount that we pay?
Fifty-five, fifty-one thousand nine fifty-eight.
Yeah.
Fifty-one nine fifty-eight?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I do think we should have, um, a fuller plan of how we're going to manage that into the future. And if we have, and maybe that's something that we look at Noma and Phenom, to say, like, there has to be maximums that municipalities can take ahead of in one year. We've said this to our own ta- ratepayers, right? We were like, okay, we, we have to do a small increase because we're looking ahead to the future, we don't want to, you know, slap a ten percent, like, that, that's unmanageable. So basically, in our community, if we're looking at forty-seven hundred dollar increase. That's. Per tax, per ratepayer. About a buck fifty each. Or two dollars. And what does that look like on a ten-year? Projection? Yeah, if that's right, like, what, yeah, what are the increases going to come? Okay, I, um, I'm not sure, uh, how we want to proceed with this. I defer to staff. What, go ahead, Melanie?
So if I can summarize, um. Richard and I can take this away and, and really kind of bring back a little bit more of a cohesive plan on how, um, either at n- next council meeting or the first meeting in June. We can also an extended invite to Mark Dupie, um, who's the Hornpean representative, but if we are going to look at, um, bringing a political delegation to either. AML is probably too soon, because delegations seem, delegations seem to be submitted by May thirtieth, but, um. For Roma, um, it would be my recommendation to, um, to discuss with Mark, bringing the whole rural north group together, which it looks to be, um. Five or six communities. So, um, to bring together a little bit of a subcommittee, that really looks, that would really look at pulling together a strategy, um, on how we can really get a handle on these costs, because, um. Ten percent increases or more, uh. Is not feasible for small communities of this size, and we certainly, if we are going to have increases like that, we certainly need to have. More notice.
Yeah.
So we could beg, so we could budget and plan for this, because our ratepayers certainly can't be surprised with increases like this moving forward.
Yeah, well, I would definitely be in favor, counsel, that, uh, once we have the meeting with, uh, if Mark accepts and just let him know the, the strain that small municipalities render. I would definitely be in favor of writing a letter to both Phenom and Noma, that they advocate on our behalf for small municipalities to have a maximum. There should be a maximum allowance of what an increase is, so at least we can budget for that. Like, budgeting a five percent increase, I thought that was.
Yeah.
That would be significant, because I think we did three percent for AdSAP, didn't we? Because we didn't have the numbers, but anyway, that's where my thoughts are going, is that we should have a, like, there should be some limits on that. So, go ahead, Richard?
Good points, um, I'll just let you know, we, we budgeted for, um. What, what is that, a five percent increase as well, I think, for the social assistance, so that's ABSSAB, right? And, uh, yeah, so we budgeted for hundred and sixty-one thousand, their actual, uh, when they completed their budget, March the fourth, is coming in at one fifty-eight seven hundred. So we're, uh, twenty, thirty, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars under on the social assistance, or sorry, our budget is higher by twenty, uh, three hundred dollars. Um, but the, uh, the health unit, like, and they didn't, um, notify us until April the ninth. So municipalities cannot wait till April to do a budget, they actually, in most cases, try and get a budget done in the fall, so it's ready to go for the first of the year. Um, so two things I would suggest, if we're going to contact the, the other organizations and try and push, is that they need to get their budgets done ahead of time. And, um, have a, a deadline as to when they can present their budget for municipal, uh, billings. And, um, if it's after that date, then there's an absolute maximum, and maybe it's, the suggestion is, it's cost of living. Whatever the previous cost of living is for the previous, um, lots of places go November to November or December to December. So at least municipalities can then proceed and do their own budget confidently, knowing that they're not going to be on the hook for a ten percent increase.
I like that strategy, at least that's a, that's a strategy to put forward, and it would, uh, be an incentive to get your budgets done.
Right.
So. Okay, is there any more information that you need, Melanie or Richard, any from council to move forward? Okay, well, thank you, Counselor Stafanic, for flagging that, and, um. Bringing it to our attention, because I think if, had we not, and if we don't take action, we'll be doing, you would have been flagging it next year, possibly.
As I said, every meeting, since I'm no longer there, I'll keep a close eye, and I'm true to my word, I'm doing it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any further comments on those minutes, uh, the two minutes that are there? Okay, there being none, I put, uh, it to a vote that we acknowledge receipt, those in favor, and that is carried. Hey, new another business, we have, uh. A report from Richard, do you want to? Yes, sorry, go.
You must, Counselor.
Oh, again, sorry, thank you, Jen. I'm moving along here. Okay, council committee updates, roundtable, here we go, Counselor Stafanic.
Levelled board meeting, thank you, May twenty-seventh, in person, Steering Immigration Committee, virtual on June five, we'll have a new staff coordinator hired by then. Um, Phenom, I have a full written report for next council meeting, I hope, my life got in the way a bit, so, uh, there'll be full report. The impact, no projected date when they will do assessments.
Stop.
None. They spoke how good their great corporation and what they do, and, uh, person put their hand up, and there's no projected date. Um. The bear pit session, we're quickly, we're much of a disappointment, all we heard was, we did this for you, we did, people are saying the roads are dangerous, the drivers are dangerous, our roads in Northeastern Ontario are crumbling, although we're doing studies, um. You showed us a reaction from the most of the public that were there.
Hmm. Did anyone ask when they're going to put in that two plus one road?
They're doing a study on it still.
Oh, it's being studied?
Still.
Oh.
That's what we see.
They studied it to death, I thought we were putting it in.
Because people are dying on the roads, you're right.
Okay.
But, uh, there'll be announcement made, and, uh, and Northlander from Toronto, Tim, Mr. Cochran, no projected date when it will start on the rails. And rest of covering my report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Lindtke Kissamaker?
Um, we had an LCC meeting last night, and, um. My contribution to the meeting was being Stacy with me, and she gave an update on what her department was up to. Um, I was quite pleased with what she presented, basically, it's tapping on everything that she's working on. Um, I was getting kind of tired of just talking about the hotel, so I'm very, very happy that she came. And, uh, I think they're, they're, uh, what she presented, they were very, uh. Uh, happy about. And, um. We're all anxious to see that rebranding come out. That's about it.
Okay. And you were at a conference, too?
I was, I, I have one thing I, I like to bring up from that conference, when you're talking about meeting, presenting something to the ministries. I do believe, like, a lot of the ministers are new in their departments. And there is one that really caught my attention, and that was, uh, Dunlop for Emergency Preparedness Department.
Okay, yeah, Jill?
Jill, yes, I think she needs to hear what we've been through, when it comes to, um, the things that we have gone through. When, um, such as nine, when one not being available.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and just, uh, some of the situations that came up from our last emergency. And, uh, what, the, the things that, like, um, and what I'm really concerned about is agencies not knowing that we have a problem here. I think she needs to hear that.
Okay, is it something that we want to do a delegation for?
I don't know, if you, if you run into her to talk to her about it, or do we do a deli?
I think it would be a full delegation, because we've had numerous things that have happened.
I would really like that.
Yeah, because we ended up, the evacuation plan, and then just, we could just list them out, what we had done. Yeah. And Peter, you're going to be at, uh, AML?
Yes.
And Ted, you're at AML as well, okay, so we have a few, I'll be there, so we have.
It's just that when they were doing their pres- when she was doing her presentation, and she hadn't an idea that she was presenting, my first reaction was, that's not going to work. And then I thought, she needs to hear what's been going on, so.
Okay, is her presentation recorded, or what she spoke on, is it?
I don't know.
Okay.
Basically, they were, she was just introducing her department, so.
Okay.
The other thing I, I'd like to bring up, going forward, I'm hoping maybe in the fall, um, we had a presentation on, um, from three high school students. And they all had different, they're all part of council, and, uh, I'd like to see that happen here. It, it, the enthusiasm that came from the three presenters, and there are three different stories. And, uh, the one that really stuck out was, uh, a, a student from, uh, Marathon, suit and tie, um, talking about what he's getting from council. He brought up an issue that he was standing up for. Uh, uh, and it was to do with having to spend money when he goes out of town for, uh. Um, sports and all that, and how come we're, they're not being subsidized or whatever? Like, how come he can't get money to do that? He has to come up with a solution. So he, he, he basically was learning from council what he can and cannot present, what would work, what wouldn't work, that kind of thing, so he presented all that. And, but what I really liked was when it came time to go, go up and, uh, ask questions to the ministry, he got up himself and asked on the same thing. And it was, the minister's face was just priceless, like, it was like, oh, he didn't know how to react. But those things is what we need in our community, and we need to get our, our kids involved, and that is one thing that I think would work.
Well, I'm all for it, and we have a, we have a, already a plan to do it, so it's just enacting it. So if we want to do it this fall, or we look at the new CAO and put it in place?
I think it's something we should do.
Okay. Okay, sounds good, yeah, I'm, I'm for it, so would, uh, Melanie, go ahead.
So, um, I've marked down two points, uh, Counselor Kissamaker, uh, the delegation request to AML, so. Definitely interested in learning more, because I can put together the, uh, delegation request and make sure that it's submitted by, by May thirtieth, and, and certainly. If there's any other delegation requests that need to be done, I can certainly support that effort, um, but we'll make sure that there's one, um, for Counselor Kissamaker and Counselor Shanaman to. And Mayor Fort to, uh, to make sure that there's one for, for Minister Dunlop. I absolutely love the youth council idea, and I, I wasn't aware that, um, the county had a plan in place to already submit one.
Yeah, we did it in twenty nineteen, then COVID hit, and we didn't because of COVID, and then it never got revisited back, and, but it's there. It's, it's fully developed, and we passed it.
Okay, so we'll, um, I will make, I'll make a note to, um, to, uh, pull that out, and, and, um, I certainly. It'll be unlikely with two weeks left on, in my term, to, um, to pull that, but I'll make sure that it's, uh, on the transition plan, when I discuss, um. When we, when we onboard the new, uh, CAO, I know that, um, AML has an idea factory. Um, where they have an updated plan, um, and that's one of them that Marathon actually put on to encourage councils to do that, so. I have spoken to, uh, the policy folks at AML, but bring that on, so.
Okay, okay, great.
So we'll, we'll make sure that that's on the to-do list for the incoming CAO.
Right on, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Peter Kissamaker?
Nothing, other than ZOPB, I followed up a couple times, I reached out to Sergeant Pissopoff, and he's very busy, I think, so I'll keep reaching out. I don't, uh, I can't get it done, I'm going to go a different route.
Okay.
But if there was one, um, uh, if this, the, the newest meeting was canceled, it's pushed back to the Junals, so.
Okay.
I should have everything in place, at least enough, so I can attend and start participating in the meetings.
Okay, right on, and did you want to speak to that?
I can support that as well.
Yeah.
Counselor Kissamaker, I can help you, make sure you have everything you need. So, I'm in the office.
Where have you been all my life?
You're just looking for me in the wrong place, Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays.
Maybe see you tomorrow then.
Okay, great. Counselor Shannon, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, we had a hospital board meeting yesterday, and, uh, MP Bill Rosenberg had actually reached out to Linda CAO with, um, some grant, uh, information. With some funds that were available, that she's been able to apply for, and hopefully she'll be able to meet the criteria for that, but it was nice that, uh, he reached out to her rather than that. And then she has invited him up, so perhaps that might work, and that's June twenty-sixth, eight, and I'll converse with her. Um, nothing for this year, twenty twenty-five, for the breast screening or the vision van in Hornpean, that will not happen, but it is on the radar for next year. Uh, CAO, um, and hospital board chair, Richard, were at a meeting with the ministry and stuff in Toronto, and were able to present that and say, hey, this is a need that needs to come back to the community, that, you know, we've been too long without it. So they were sure that it would not happen this year, but there's, look at it for next year. Um, local coverage is good, um, Dr. Cameron's been able to cover the summer, so that's all well, and, um. At the conference that they were at with the ministry, every northern hospital except the Thunder Bay is in financial, a precarious situation, you know, it can go either way, and right now we are in decent shape. But it is precarious, and I live in Thunder Bay, every northern community is hurting, the hospitals. That's all.
Okay, thank you for that.
Oh, no, one, sorry, one other, um, so the hospital board makeup has changed, and they presented a new, and it was redone by the not-for-profit organization, so it wasn't something the hospital chose to do, it was mandated. So the municipality will not have a representative on it, um, as of December. That will be, that'll be off, and so there'll be up to a maximum of eight members for the, um, officers, and up to eight participants. But there is not a mandate that any specific person from any area has to be on it as far as, um, the makeup. So it'll be just be chosen people necessarily, so, so I did express a concern that would maybe put in a, a possibility of cherry picking, or being able to pick just the person you wanted, because maybe. So, I mean, at the end, it was, you know, around the table, it was saying, you know, that is a possibility, but it was something that's been done by the not-for-profits, and it was presented and done. And that's the way, that's the new makeup, will not have a representation from it, they won't have to necessarily have an indigenous. And that's the way, that's the new makeup, will not have a representation from it. They won't have to necessarily have an indigenous representation, they won't have to have people who apply for and be chosen from who applies.
And the current board passed this?
It it wasn't a passing, it was a mandated. It was, it's come down from the from the not-for-profit organization and the provincial government. I guess, yeah, federal government.
It was mandated?
Yes.
To change?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I have serious concerns if it's not um. So are they looking at technical expertise with their board members?
That's still up in the air. Though, yeah, and that's that at this point, that's all I can say for right now. So so that was one of the concerns is that apparently in from the legal perspective was that the carryover from a board meeting to council meeting could be words. Apparently that was part of the legal patients that came through.
Okay, I'm just concerned about the like inclusion, diversity, equity and then like so with the HHC, we we do more of a technical, like we want certain and even Good Roads, we do that, right? It's a technical aspect. So we're trying to fill certain areas so that you have that expertise around your table, so.
It's avoid there, it's avoid.
Go ahead.
Isn't that something that we should be asking for in writing? So we have some kind of documentation saying why this is happening?
Yeah, I can take that back to to Linda and be, well, she's actually beyond holidays, so it'll be a while, but well.
Just, you know, just for clarity.
Well, yeah, because she actually went on and pulled out the thing from the government.
I'm surprised.
Yeah.
For the not-for-profits. That's all, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Uh just a few updates from myself. Sorry, I'm thinking about the hospital still and their board structure. But uh just moving forward, so we did have a planning meeting with the Good Roads people and uh June eighteenth is the Wednesday, that's you'll have the invite, we'll go out, each of you and uh to your spouse to attend. And um we're looking at on the Thursday, uh the Thursday. I've reached out to the mill and I'm working in the background with CN uh to have some tours there. And uh what I'm hoping is that on the Thursday, we'll invite all of the business people to the dinner. Uh there's a planned fish fry on the Thursday. So um we're look, everything's moving forward. The only uh item I'm having difficulty and would like some help with is uh setting up some fishing availability. I'm hoping that we could do it on second government. And uh a few fishing boats with the gear. And I'm not sure of the numbers, I'll find out later this week what the numbers are, the people that want to go fishing and that'll happen Thursday night during the fish fry. We'll just drive them out, they can go for a couple hours fishing and then come back in. So um you have any ideas on that? Please reach out to me. And uh we'll get that in works. And uh moving forward, I just uh I was able to uh reach out to Terry Shan and to Bill, so I'm glad they've reached back out and hopefully they'll be in our team as well. And that's uh that's it for me, okay? Okay. And moving on now. To do another business. Thank you for telling me that I was skipping over, there was lots of information there. Okay, um eleven point one, did you have a report from Richard for the financial indicators review? Do you want to speak to your report, Richard?
Yeah, I just thought it was important uh to uh pass this on to council. The two main items that were of concern were highlighted. Um I have had a meeting with Enrique Paraca, who is our municipal advisor with MMAH. Uh we discussed these and I did say that the one um the annual surplus is sort of a an ambiguous uh factor, I think, to look at because the way financial statements are prepared uh like two years ago, the first of all, these figures are based on twenty twenty three's FIR, Financial Information Return. Uh twenty twenty four will be completed as soon as we have the audit financial statements, okay? So we're a couple of years since these results, but they are based on the fact that in twenty twenty three, the municipality got uh four million, four and a half million grant for the airport and that money shows as a revenue. And then all of the capital spending gets set up as an asset and amortized. So it showed a huge surplus. Um and you can see in the in the report, in twenty twenty two, our factor was eighty one point zero percent. And then in twenty twenty three, it it dropped to a minus thirty three nine. So I I still think that's a very ambiguous factor. The taxes receivable, yeah, that's a good indicator to keep an eye on and that's one of the items that the municipality was at risk. And again, in my conversation with Enrique, um the big part, big problem we have there and is still ongoing is the unpaid um taxes from the province. So he's uh he's getting involved with that uh force as well. Um because I think the twenty twenty four figure is even gonna grow in that regard, but hopefully we can get that all cleaned up in twenty twenty five. Uh these factors and just so council is aware, these indicators are looked at uh by others as well. For instance, yeah, we're in the process of putting together a loan with Infrastructure Ontario and they definitely do go into our FIR and start looking at a lot of these these misinformation. So I'm not sure whether the banks would, but uh they normally just ask for audited financial statements. But anyway, I thought it was important to put this in front of council. Uh does anybody have any questions on the uh the financial indicators?
Any questions from councillor? Councillor Peter Kissmer.
I don't know if directly related or not, uh Richard, but they just mentioned there like we could be up to twenty five percent receivables that are behind with the taxes. What percentage would be the provincially owned uh lands versus uh municipal uh municipal uh residents?
Um in twenty twenty four, there's probably uh half of the outstanding amount is from uh the province.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Peter. Um I do have a question for you, Richard. In your report, you indicated that we should monitor this into the future. And how do you recommend us doing that?
Simply by um while the taxes we've got to stay on top of. Okay, that's the one big item. Um generally, the municipality is in pretty good shape. The annual surplus, as I said, I think it's gonna rise and fall depending on capital grants. Um for instance, in twenty twenty five, when we do the uh the Third Avenue project, it's probably going to uh end up showing the numbers for twenty twenty five as a nice big surplus, again, because we'll have the grant revenue and then the spending will be capitalized again. So um I I'm not as concerned about that number, but the taxes receivable of of all of the numbers on their indicators, that's the one that I think uh we've got to stay on top of. And once we get uh this this problem cleared up with the MTO properties, we just need to make sure that every year uh it doesn't start getting in arrears again.
Right, right, okay. Thank you for that. Any further questions from council? Okay, I uh I should have put a mover and a seconder and open that on the floor, move by councillor. Peter Kissmaker, second by councillor Ted Chenman. Be it resolved that council does hereby receive the financial indicator review as information? Any further comments? There being none, I put that to a vote, those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, we have this twenty twenty five summer students, if I can get a mover and a seconder to put the motion on the floor, move by councillor Greg O'Stefan, second by councillor Ted Chenman. Be it resolved that council authorizes the hiring of up to five summer students to complete the arena summer programming, township property grass cutting and other jobs as assigned by the public works manager. And Richard, do you want to speak to your report?
Uh yeah, I'll just make a comment. Uh the budget was based on um the same basis as previous years. And I guess I wasn't quite aware of the fact that the arena has a very um active summer program as well. So I know as my my report says, we had budgeted for two summer students uh for public works and that was mainly for grass cutting and uh uh maintenance and then the arena is for the programs. But uh when it come time to advertise, the request was for more staff, so. Uh therefore, the options were put in front of council. If anybody's got any questions, I'll try and answer.
Okay, thank you, Richard. I open up the floor for questions. Go ahead, councillor Spence.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the option three as you uh recommended, Richard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I agree with option three as well, just because we have to start thinking that way, we're always gonna be missing somebody, so.
Any other further questions or comments? Okay. Um I just have, I agree with option three completely. I liked your report, I thought it was well planned out and if we're not utilizing those dollars, we should be utilizing them. Trying to get the work done. Is there um a way that if we can't get um students to cut the grass, are we able to contract some of that work out? I know we can't at the cemetery, we've had that discussion at nauseam. But the other areas within the township?
We we discussed that at the SMT as well and it could be an issue with the the union, I guess. Melanie might want to jump in on this as well, but I think uh if if you advertise and can't find students, um the next option or find anybody to apply for the job, then I guess the next option is to try and contract it out and um I I my opinion is you would, you might be uh challenged by the union, but I think as long as you document that we advertised, we, you know, we interviewed whatever we could, but we couldn't get uh people to apply or to take the jobs, then um the work's gotta get done, so I I would hope that the union would not um take that any further. But Melanie, we did discuss that, didn't we, at uh SMT?
Absolutely, Richard. So we did, we did discuss uh implementing a contingency plan and that was one of the reasons why we made the recommendation that we did, um because the work does need to be done and of course our preference is to do it with unionized staff and our summer students, as soon as they're hired, they are unionized staff. Um however, um if that's not an option, I would um I would hope that um our union would be understanding. Um we have went through all the processes. Um we do have a a very clear record and um evidence that we went through all the processes, we have a dossier. Um but um where where not possible, we will have to go to the private sector. Um and look for someone to uh um to contract um to make sure that this work does get done to in order for us to maintain service level standards that are expected on in our municipality.
Okay. Are we able to um go like be a bit more proactive with the union and let them know, because we've had, this has been consistent for uh what, I think we're in year five? Where one year we didn't get enough people apply and then we've lost staff midway through. Um and I would just, I I would rather, instead of waiting till it does happen, can we be a bit more proactive and say, look, if this has been happening and so that we're working with the union in that regard?
Absolutely, and I think um we've done a really good job at creating um uh an open dialogue with the union on a number of different issues. And uh I think that the union understands that we are working in in goodwill.
Okay, so, yeah, because I'm with you, Melanie. I don't want, I would rather go to uh the young people that get the, you know, they get their first crack at the township and what we're about and all of that. And just even when I was, when I was a kid, you know, there was, well, several more jobs, but they were sought after. Those were the jobs that the kids wanted at that time, so.
Yeah, I think a big issue that we face is that um people like the young people are going to CN or or other jobs in private industry where they can get, make a little bit more money. Which, you know, is understandable, but if we can get one or two, then that would be really great.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, so um the motion on the floor is for uh recommendation three. So is there any further discussion on that? Okay, I put that to a vote, those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, item is eleven point three, we have uh JHD Limited on behalf of CN Railway Company. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please, move by councillor. Ted Chenman, second by councillor Belinda Kissmaker, be it resolved that that council does hereby authorize the interim CIO to sign the file for the access agreement with JHBL Limited on behalf of the Canadian National Railway Railway Company CN related to the property located on a hundred Front Street, Hornpain, Ontario. Any discussion on that motion? Uh yes, go ahead, Melanie.
So I am passing out an updated version, so the version that is in council's package does have a red line. Prior to the meeting, um we were able to um to finalize an a an agreement, so you'll see in um in clause number five, you'll see the update, the updated version. Um I was able to get this approved by uh our legal counsel. Um so if council wants to take a minute, I can also read it. Oh, I think council.
Okay, we're okay to move forward? Okay, those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, item twelve point one is bylaws, the CIBC credit agreement moved by councillor Greg O'Stefan, second by councillor Ted Chenman. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty one thirty three being a bylaw that authorized the borrowing of money to meet specific expenditures of the council of the town, sorry, of the council of the corporation. Be hereby read a first and second time, be considered read a third time and finally passed. Any questions or comments on the bylaw? Okay, there being none, council, I put that to a vote, those in favor, and that is carried. Yeah, item thirteen is motions, notice of motions, we don't have any, and item fourteen is moving into a closed session, if I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Move by councillor Peter Kissmer, count, and second by councillor Ted Chenman. Be it resolved at the next portion of the meeting at seven twenty seven PM, be closed to the public in order to discuss advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege and who needs the patients necessary for that purpose and a position plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to negotiations. Pursuant to section two thirty nine, two F K of the Municipal Act two thousand and one. Those in favor? And that is carried, okay? if council wants to take a minute, I can also read it. Well, I think, council? Okay, we're okay to move forward? Okay, those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, item twelve point one is bylaws. The CIBC credit agreement moved by councillor Drago Stefan, seconded by councillor Ted Chinman. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty-one thirty-three being a bylaw that authorized the borrowing of money to meet specific expenditures of the council of the town, sorry, of the council of the corporation, the town of Hornet. Be hereby read a first and second time, be considered read a third time and finally passed. Any questions or comments on the bylaw? Okay, there being none, council, I put that to a vote. Those in favor, and that is carried. Yeah, item thirteen is motions, notice of motions. We don't have any. And item fourteen is moving into a closed session. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Peter Kissamaker, and seconded by councillor Ted Chinman. Be it resolved that the next portion of the meeting at seven twenty-seven PM be closed to the public in order to discuss advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege and who needs new patients necessary for that purpose, and the position plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to negotiations pursuant to section two thirty-nine, two F K of the municipal act two thousand and one. Those in favor, and that is carried. Okay. Okay, if I need a mover and a seconder to return to open council, please. Moved by councillor Peter Kissamaker, seconded by councillor Ted Chinman. Be it resolved that council of the corporation, the town of Hornet, does hereby return to open council at seven fifty-two PM. Those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, I'm going to defer to deputy mayor Drago Stefan for the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Port. Under the closed session, item fourteen point four, may I have a mover, please, and a seconder? Councillor Chinman and councillor Belinda Kissamaker, please.
Be it resolved that council accepts the confidential settlement agreement from CN and directs staff to proceed as directed in the confidential closed session.
All in favor? Carry. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the adjournment of items sixteen. If we need a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Peter Kissamaker, seconded by councillor Ted Chinman. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty-one thirty-four being a bylaw that confirmed the proceedings of council at the regular meeting held on Wednesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, be hereby read a first and second time, be considered read a third time and finally passed. Those in favor, and that is carried. And our adjournment. Mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Drago Stefan, seconded by councillor Ted Chinman. Be it resolved that council of the corporation, the town of Hornet, does hereby return to open council at seven fifty-two PM. Those in favor, and that is carried. And that is carried. Okay, I'm going to defer to deputy mayor Drago Stefan for the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Port. Under the closed session, item fourteen point four, may I have a mover, please, and a seconder? Councillor Chinman and councillor Belinda Kissamaker, please.
Be it resolved that council accepts the confidential settlement agreement from CN and directs staff to proceed as directed in the confidential closed session.
All in favor? Carry. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the adjournment of items sixteen. If we need a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Peter Kissamaker, seconded by councillor Ted Chinman. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty-one thirty-four being a bylaw that confirmed the proceedings of council at the regular meeting held on Wednesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, be hereby read a first and second time, be considered read a third time and finally passed. Those in favor, and that is carried. And our adjournment. Mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Drago Stefan, seconded by councillor Ted Chinman. Be it resolved that council of the corporation, the town of Hornet, does hereby return to open council at seven fifty-two PM. Those in favor, and that is carried. And that is carried. Okay, item twelve point one is bylaws. The CIBC credit agreement moved by councillor Drago Stefan, seconded by councillor Ted Chinman. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty-one thirty-three being a bylaw that authorized the borrowing of money to meet specific expenditures of the council of the town, sorry, of the council of the corporation, the town of Hornet. Be hereby read a first and second time, be considered read a third time and finally passed. Any questions or comments on the bylaw? Okay, there being none, council, I put that to a vote. Those in favor, and that is carried. Yeah, item thirteen is motions, notice of motions. We don't have any. And item fourteen is moving into a closed session. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Peter Kissamaker, and seconded by councillor Ted Chinman. Be it resolved that the next portion of the meeting at seven twenty-seven PM be closed to the public in order to discuss advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege and who needs new patients necessary for that purpose, and the position plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to negotiations pursuant to section two thirty-nine, two F K of the municipal act two thousand and one. Those in favor, and that is carried. Okay. Okay, if I need a mover and a seconder to return to open council, please. Moved by councillor Peter Kissamaker, seconded by councillor Ted Chinman. Be it resolved that council of the corporation, the town of Hornet, does hereby return to open council at seven fifty-two PM. Those in favor, and that is carried. And that is carried. Okay, I'm going to defer to deputy mayor Drago Stefan for the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Port. Under the closed session, item fourteen point four, may I have a mover, please, and a seconder? Councillor Chinman and councillor Belinda Kissamaker, please.
Be it resolved that council accepts the confidential settlement agreement from CN and directs staff to proceed as directed in the confidential closed session.
All in favor? Carry. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the adjournment of items sixteen. If we need a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Peter Kissamaker, seconded by councillor Ted Chinman. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty-one thirty-four being a bylaw that confirmed the proceedings of council at the regular meeting held on Wednesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, be hereby read a first and second time, be considered read a third time and finally passed. Those in favor, and that is carried. And our adjournment. Mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Drago Stefan, seconded by councillor Ted Chinman. Be it resolved that council of the corporation, the town of Hornet, does hereby return to open council at seven fifty-two PM. Those in favor, and that is carried. And that is carried. Okay, thank you, Councillor.